...to about a buck of your presentation. Information regarding the maintenance of Big and Little Cottonwood canyons in Central Wasatch Division. I found it so interesting because of the impact those canyons have on our constituents that I thought would be valuable for the council to see the same presentation. There's so much conversation about Wasatch Boulevard, about the judge, and the mayor issues, but Judge, let me turn it over to you and, uh, do I am?
Yeah, you ready?
Yeah. Okay, uh, just a little background on me. My name's Jake Brown, um, the roadway operations manager for the Cottonwood canyons. Um, I've been with the Cottonwood canyons for about four years now. Uh, before then, I was in charge of downtown Salt Lake, Spaghetti Bowl, Capitol Hill, um, all the homeless problems, so it's much better up here. Um, so, next slide. So, uh, when I first got up here to the Cottonwood canyons, I came up here as a kid and, and I remember coming skiing a couple times and, and I realized real fast that the canyons are very complicated, very complicated. Um, you have a lot of, uh, businesses, uh, you have a lot of enthusiasts, and, uh, you have a lot of people that have a lot of stake in these canyons and, uh, people are very passionate about the canyons and, uh, I learned that really quick and, uh, not one ant, one fix can fix everything. Everybody has different needs and different wants and that's something that I learned along the way. Uh, go ahead to the next slide. So, one of the things that I was challenged with when I got up here was, is to try to, try to make the canyons, uh, have a kind of a national park feel. And so, one of the things that we tried to do, uh, with the cost that we had, and we tried to use, uh, the natural elements and we tried to, uh, use colors that would blend in. Um, so we stained the barrier, uh, we used, uh, rock in the canyons to, uh, put back natural drainages and, uh, anytime we had an erosion or, uh, anything like that, we tried to put it back better than we found it. And we tried to, uh, beautify the canyons. Okay, next slide. And, uh, from the moment I got up here, people were like, "You need to fix this problem. You need to fix this problem. You need to fix this problem." And as I got up here, uh, I realized in the first snowstorm, um, my boss, Carlos Pizares, got caught in traffic and he called me up one day and said, "Hey, you got a lot of stuff you need to figure out and you need to do it quick." And so, we started looking at, uh, what are things that were slowing people down? What are things that are preventing people from getting up and down the canyon? Well, one of them is, we have a lot of pitfalls. Uh, this drain up here on the corner used to be a giant hole. People used to drive into that all the time and you'd just see their taillights just sticking out. Well, then, of course, you have everybody stopping to help, which causes everybody to back up in traffic. Uh, we didn't want to take away the bike lane, but yet we wanted to be able to control the water and the erosion and keep cars from going off. And so, we used this rolled gutter in several different places in Little Cottonwood Canyon and have been tremendously successful in keeping people on the road and keeping traffic going. So, that's some of the things we're doing. Uh, Guardswood Pass, um, is a big issue and we're still working on that, but we put barrier up there, we painted lines, uh, we put no parking areas and that road, uh, was able to flow again and working with Wasatch County, it's getting better and better each time. So, those are some of the things that we're working with on a shed level, um, that we're doing. Next slide. Uh, one of the things that we have a lot of, uh, issues with, and this is what's affecting your city on a constant basis, is people were driving all the way up to Brighton and Brighton was full and people had nothing to do but tried to make it around the Brighton Loop. Well, if you ever, you'll see a video a little later on the presentation, it's nearly impossible. And in fact, it's sometimes it could take two hours to just get around the Brighton Loop. So, you have people continuing to come up the canyon, want to ski, realizing that there's no room and they had no place to turn around. So, we installed this roundabout and this worked phenomenal. This was awesome. So, people in Brighton was able to close off the road, people came up, they were able to go around the roundabout, turn around and come back down the canyon and we were able to speed people's time up and ease congestion, which was awesome. So, uh, next slide.
Was that before or after the, the person got arrested that round though?
Uh, that was this year that they got arrested. Um, you'll see some pictures of Brighton. Yeah, we got some pretty good pictures there. Uh, this was taken on President's Day. I call this Hell Day. Um, this was bad. Um, one thing I wanted to show you here is, uh, one thing that I think that we need to do is we need to push, push mass transit. We need to get people on buses. Of course, Utah people, they don't like buses, but as you can see right here, this bus is full, this bus is full, these buses are full, they're all here waiting to get up the canyon, but they're gonna get up there at the same time as the cars do right now. So, what good is it to ride a bus? You're gonna hold all your kids' crap and while you're skiing for three hours while you try to get up the canyon. So, we looked at that and this puts great pressure on your city. We can't move. We can't pave the roads. Uh, Cottonwood Heights plow drivers can't get to their neighborhoods, people can't get to their schools, people can't, it just shuts down the city. And, uh, we're aware of this. So, this is what we try to avoid every time we go up the canyon. Okay, next slide. So, this is what you're seeing on the can, in the canyon this year. We saw numbers off the charts this year on, on people coming up and skiing. I think it has something to do with the new pass, ski passes that they're putting out, but we're seeing a lot of people, um, come to Utah to ski. So, what you have here is an uphill lane right here where these cars are parked and they're not even trying to get over the white line. Then you have people, since they don't wanna walk in the snow, they're gonna walk in the roadway, which is forcing people into the uphill lane and then you have the downhill traffic driving on the shoulder. Three times we had to shut down the canyon for safety, so we shut it, uh, for downhill, or we only allowed downhill only. We had to shut uphill, um, just because of the massive amount of traffic and, and the unsafe conditions that happened while, when these, when, uh, all these people were up here.
Three times this year or three times on President's Day?
No, three times this year on different occasions. President's Day, it just was... So, yeah, uh, next slide. So, this is a, this is a normal video. Is, do you have a video of this? Is this a video?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. This is a plow driver's view of trying to get through the Brighton Loop.
It's audio.
It does have audio.
You can just say, "What's this?"
You can see, you can see how tight it is right there?
It's a good thing it has place.
And then you just have people jet out in front of you. Um, a lot of these areas were no parking areas and the Brighton Resort simply bagged our signs and then ramped up the snow on, uh, the hills with their, um, with their snow cats and then tried to make as much parking space.
So, is this all no parking this area?
Yep.
That's a bagged sign.
Yep, they're all bagged. All these signs say no parking on them, they bagged them.
The area bagged them?
The area bagged? Probably did now, probably didn't.
Well, they said they did. I must've talked to someone I didn't know. Um, you see how, how congested it is? And this is, this is starting to be a normal, normal day up there. We were getting upwards, uh...
How many cars are out there over the weekend on a weekday?
Over the course of the day, seven or eight thousand. So, you're getting a lot of people up there and, uh, we just don't have room for people to park, hence we need people to get on mass transit.
So, if you're trying to say some eight thousand cars in a heavy, heavy day?
Yeah.
What's the capacity for parking?
No one knows, 'cause they'll just put them everywhere, as you see.
Well, I mean, as far as, uh, formal parking?
We haven't been able to get that number.
There, there's, um, the county did a study in 2012 for both canyons and they tried to assess the number of parking spots in the canyon, both park runs, on roads, and what they call pullouts. Um, and so, in middle time, there's about, um, forty-five minute spots up to the top of the canyon, well, a big number of about thirty cars under the spot. So, to do the math, we get six, seven thousand cars in each canyon on a busy Saturday. This is how we see. Their assessment, they developed that number of which they thought was a safe, you know, a reasonable amount of parking.
And the law enforcement is overwhelmed, uh, UPD, uh, and just constantly, at one time...
They can't beat anywhere either.
Well, and the problem is, is on a day like this, uh, you need a four-wheel drive tow truck. And the tow trucks aren't gonna come up the canyon because they could tow about three times as many cars down here as they could just going up the canyon. So, um, I had a one guy, says, "I've got a parking ticket, valet." You know, you're just paying for valet parking, I guess. So, next slide. Okay, so, every morning, uh, our crew tries to avoid the major backups here on Wasatch. That's one of our major goals. Uh, when I first got here, we would wait for my call from out to Central and whether it was snowing or not, then I would call everybody, wake them up, and then try to attack it from there. And, uh, I decided that's not gonna work anymore. And so, now we staff it. If there's a chance of snow, we're here at four o'clock in the morning, first truck goes up the canyon at four thirty, equipment's working up top, and we're doing our best to get the road open and in shape so we don't have those kind of backups. And, uh, we've taken a very aggressive approach in our snow plowing in doing that. Um, and it's worked pretty good. I'd say it worked all, all the time, but it's literally a race against the clock. Uh, we have a lot of, uh, snow to move and we deal with skiers at four o'clock in the morning that wanna try to park to go, they call them the dawn patrol. They, uh, park and they hike up the hill and they ski one time down and then they get in and go to work. So, next slide. So, this is the video too, it just gives you an idea. Um, I think we got about a foot. Oh, go back to the other one. I, is that just a picture or is that a video?
Yeah. If I hit the play button, it's...
Okay.
...answering to the next slide.
So, um, we try to, uh, move as much snow as we can and get ready to go and, uh, so, yeah, just go to the next slide. So, one of the biggest things that you'll find a lot of delay in, go ahead and pause for a second. Oops. Okay. Uh, yeah, just one second on that. Um, one of the things that, uh, you'll see a lot of delays for are the avalanche control that we're doing up in, um, Little Cottonwood. Little Cottonwood has sixty-five slide paths that can hit the road at any given time. Now, when you're driving up Little Cottonwood, you really can't see it. You kinda look, you're like, "What's the big deal here?" Um, but we have several active slide paths and we have an avalanche crew that's just dedicated to the avalanche work in here in Little Cottonwood.
So, is that sixty-five both canyons or this little cotton?
Just Little Cottonwood. Uh, not all of them go, but there's different starting slide paths and we have our favorites that kinda hit the road on a regular basis. And so, a lot of people saying, "Well, what's the big deal? Get the road open, get people up here." Or people say, "Why, why was I down here? Why can't I get to school? And why was Wasatch backed up?" I'm gonna show you why right now. Go ahead and push play. As you can see at the top of the canyon, we fired artillery, the slide has started. Watch how much speed it picks up when it gets down to the trees here.
Who's in the truck?
Me. This is the safe zone, we know where it's gonna kinda run, uh, but that, that put about five feet of snow on the road.
But how much?
Five feet. That put about five feet of snow on the road, blocked the road.
That's a lot harder than, I suspect, to move and plow than just...
Yeah, it, it kinda sets up like concrete, it's really hard. We get the blowers in there. Uh, one, one day when we had the canyon closed all day, we were back at White Pine Parking, which is probably three blocks back from this spot right here, a little further back. And when they shot this slide, we got powder clouded from clear back there and it's about six inches of powder landed on our truck. And it uprooted trees and, uh, full size. It was amazing. You can actually see the damage when you drive up by China Wall, the granite wall right up by Inverwood. If you look off to the right, you can see trees for, uh, hundred yards blown over. Um, so, we try to make sure that the canyon is safe for everybody that's coming up. And while we're doing this controlled work, we start at the bottom of the canyon and then we work our way up. And what I do is, my job is, I don't really have anything to do at that point, so I get annoyed the avalanche crew. So, what I do is, "Hey, can we bring traffic up? Hey, when can we bring traffic up?" So, we'll bring traffic up, um, and we'll sneak people up as long as the shots are good and we'll try to keep the, the traffic going on Wasatch Boulevard, try to keep it going as much as we can and fill the canyon up till we get to the point where we're done shooting and then we open the canyon. So, that's another thing that we've done. We've usually just left them right at the Bravo Gate and we didn't open it till, till we were completely done. Now, we work in accordance with the avalanche crew and try to bring people up to take that pressure off of Wasatch Boulevard. Um, we've also worked, um, been pretty successful in working with Sandy City and they helped control ninety-four hundred south and be able to control a lot of the traffic and they actually went and pulled some buses out and brought buses up to the front of the line. I don't know if that's a regular practice, but it was a big hit for a lot of people.
I was gonna ask, is that, would that be something you would do, where you pull those buses out and send them up first?
Um, we try to give every chance we get to buses. I mean, every possible, like, if I can stop traffic and let buses in, I'll do it. If we can get people, buses going first, um, when we do a closure in the canyon, uh, we'll tell the resorts to let the buses go first. So, we try to incentivize riding the bus, but if you ever rode the bus, it's not that fun. So, that's one of the things I think we need to be doing. Well, yeah. So, uh...
Do we ask you questions as we go? I'm sorry, I was...
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Any questions?
Whatever you're comfortable with, I'd totally ask questions.
Well, I, I think as it relates to that particular day, you're mentioning Sandy, um, bless their hearts, um, controls their road. On this, one particular day last year, they decided to close their road to let it to people that wanted to park and wait along the side of the road. And what that did, as you can imagine, was push all that traffic into Cottonwood Heights and to all of our neighborhoods. And I think it, it, it increased traffic rates to like three hours. People on Danish Road getting up to the mountains took three hours. It was really frustrating for me, I have pictures of it and I was talking to people, encouraging outsiders to go to Snow Basin because I knew it would take them a long time. It seems to me like coordination and all of this is key in terms of, and I've shared this with the mayor, I've shared this with Tim, uh, as early as yesterday, the coordination of Sandy when they're closing the roads in Cottonwood Heights and you guys are the ones that manage the road, Wasatch for us, so we have no control except to reap the, the benefits of all of that traffic. And so, it would be really helpful, I mean, maybe I'm getting to the fleshline before you're ending, which I apologize for, but for us, the, the two cities and you and DJ to sit down and talk about the letters that we get from our constituents and the ideas that they have, they brought up some great ideas on how to mitigate some of these impacts to our community. That, that, that being one, I mean, that day was, I have to be honest, was, I don't know, I don't know that anybody else here skis like I do on the council. Maybe Tally?
I snowboard.
Or snowboard, goes up to Snowbird or Alta, but that one particular day is like, and I could speak to many people and many complaints I got, so I'm like shaking, 'cause like, how do we avoid something?
Exactly. And I think we have avoided it since then. That was two years ago.
No.
That was, those, those pictures were taken two years ago.
No, this day I'm talking about was like three weeks before that. I could pull up...
One of the things that we've also worked with is we've adjusted the signals at Big Cotton Canyon to allow more people to flush through. Um, we've worked in coordination, um, we have a roads meeting for SR two-ten, um, all the, all the deputy chiefs, uh, everybody gets an email of when we're gonna close the canyon, uh, they are notified and, uh, the information does go out. Now, whether it's shared with other people in your... Things when we're closing the canyon, uh, we try to get as much notice as we can, but sometimes the avalanches, um, they can come down just naturally. It just depends on how much water, uh, wind loading, all the different things, uh, play into it. So, it's not a precise science. If we were to say we're gonna close the canyon at eight o'clock and then we get a big cell that comes through, that's not gonna happen. We may have to close the canyon at six o'clock. But we try to get that information out and that's one thing we're working on, uh, I asked, you know, to look at ways to communicate better, look at a sole source of communication instead of this person communicating this, this person communicating this, uh, you have canyon alerts saying this, you have the TOC Traffic Operations Center saying this, and we were looking to consolidate that for one voice. So, that's one thing that we are looking at. I did talk to a lot of your constituents when we had the open house and a lot of people around there and I, I get a lot of complaints, uh, through UDOT and I go out and talk to a lot of them. And, uh, a lot of them, uh, were looking at that and if we keep traffic going and, uh, we can avoid people, a lot of people think they have all these shortcuts through your neighborhoods and they end up just actually causing more of a, of a, of a hazard. So, any help with law enforcement out, a presence on Wasatch on those type of days would be awesome.
So, I had, I had an email, a text exchange with the mayor and, and Tim about this very thing of people speeding through our neighborhood, speeding over speed limit, and I said, "Is there any way that we can get some extra enforcement from our police?" And if the answer is, which makes sense, when the roads are snowy or there's, they're having to deal with the traffic and so they can't help with that.
Exactly.
And so, that's what I'm saying, like, sitting down and outside of this meeting, of course, and collaborating and creatively thinking is like...
Absolutely.
It's so wonderful, thank you for being here, but, um...
No, I agree. I, I, I think, you know, we're not gonna solve everybody's problem. I mean, I've, it frustrates me just as much as I can leave the top of Alta after we're done and park the equipment and I'll come down in the valley and I will see a car bumper to bumper all the way till I get to sixty, uh, sixty-two hundred south and thirtieth east. Uh, the turn lane for Big Cottonwood this year got to the freeway on ramp. I mean, so, I mean, we are seeing people that are skiing and, and, and it does, it does put a lot of pressure on your, on the people that live up here. Um, and, you know, I, I, we constantly look for ways, um, to get the road open faster or to do that. So, just know that we do have that, we're willing to partner and work with you in any way. Uh, Matt's guys have, uh, helped us out in plowing Wasatch where they can, 'cause sometimes our trucks are stuck up the canyon and it's done an awesome job there. So, there's a lot of things that we're trying to do and trying to be, uh, really aggressive on to make sure that your town doesn't suffer. And I think, uh, it's really important that we do have these, uh, chances to talk and, and make sure that we, uh, find the right solution, 'cause I just don't think one thing is the right answer. I think there's a lot of little things we can bring together and, and, uh, make it a lot better for us. Any other questions? Yes?
I'm assuming road width wise, you don't have enough room for three lanes or four lanes up the canyons? And for the things, you know, the two, the ways to...
So, my opinion on that is, I guess you could put three lanes up the canyon, depending on how much you, or how much money you wanna spend. Uh, my, uh, my understanding and seeing people behave up here, when there's three lanes and it's snowing really hard, people use one lane. And that's, that's the hardest part is people are, they tend to just, like, we call it a deer trail, where people just get in behind each other and they don't ever use the other lane, which is nice, 'cause I use the other lane, I pass everybody and get up and try to get the other people unstuck, but, um, I think it's a combination of, uh, uh, mass transit.
Well, is it good to bus? When you got the bumper to bumper, those cars aren't gonna be moving very fast, they might be going five, ten miles an hour.
So, I think a way on Wasatch to give buses and access to the canyon faster, a bus lane, I think would be an awesome idea. Um, I've heard a lot of people say that.
But when they get to the canyon, how do they go up the canyon without...
Once they get in the canyon, given the merge, I mean, they're, they're moving. Um, when you get people in the canyon, they're usually going. It's, it's all the merges that you have, you have ninety-fourth, you have, um, you know, the Lakai cutoff, you have all the people going in the neighborhoods trying to sneak in. Um, so, you have all those people, but if we can figure out a lane to get people on buses and reduce some of those cars, I think we, I think we have a fighting chance, but, um, I think if you just put more lanes, I think you're just inviting more people.
Well, I think if you're able to get the buses up and back...
Yeah.
Then you, all of a sudden, you don't need three or four times as many buses because the ones that are full, 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 'cause I'm taking four hour round trip, are making four trips.
Yeah. And I think, uh, one of the things that the skiers have that you, you're gonna need, uh, centers, 'cause a lot of people come up with their skis. Um, I went and rode the bus, 'cause I didn't know what it was like, so I got down here in the valley and I got on the bus and I rode the bus all the way up to the resorts. And I have kids and my kids don't like to carry anything. So, I look like a pack meal every time we go somewhere, 'cause I got the backpack and it all and everything with me. And, uh, I talked to a lot of families on the bus and, and people feel more comfortable in their car because they don't have to tote that. And the problem is, is the resorts are running out of places to put things. They have no lockers. Um, if you've been into Alta and the Albion, the whole side of the wall is filled with backpacks. Just, they have to move some of their doors and stuff. So, I, I think there's a combination of transit centers and different things like that, um, really push transit. Um, I think some avalanche shelters would do wonders. And then, um, um, kinda looking at ways that we can, uh, carpool and give incentive to carpool, the, the resorts have, uh, done incentive, Alta has let people park right up front. If you're one guy, you get to go out to the north forty. Um, Stobird started an app where you can earn rewards and, you know, towards your forty-dollar burger or whatever. So, I mean, so, there's a lot of things that are going on that are, are good.
Jake, you're building on what the councilman, Michael, helping with it. I do have a question. Um, you talked about communication. In the meeting in the last year, we talked about, or somebody mentioned the idea of having a canyon commander or someone who, like himself, oversees the canyons, but also has that communication channels open through some type of, uh, process where everything's, uh, shared almost immediately. Is that your role or is that something that's been considered or...
That's, that's kinda my role right now and, uh, I think we're...
Kind of, but not really or...
Yeah. Well, I, I kinda take it upon that role. Uh, when, you have a C, I have to call five different people when I put the chain on to a thing, you know, so everybody knows. Um, I try to keep the information updated.
So, are you calling personally?
Yeah.
If you have someone that could do that.
No, that's me. And so, we're working on a canyon communication specialist.
Oh, okay.
Someone that will put that information out real time, someone that can put out the messages, some people that can contact. If we've got a canyon closure, the city agencies are contacted right away, so the police, the fire, everybody can be notified that we're having canyon closures, be prepared for traffic, different things like that. That's one of the article, uh, things that we are pursuing right now.
More questions of Jake? Obviously, I think we have meetings coming up, uh, in the future. Obviously, I think we have meetings coming up in the future, we're talking, you know, about, it's not just the EIS, but the current interim measures and stuff like that, but.
When you say we?
Well, the city council, with, with UDOT, with everyone.
I think there's a lot of chance, Cotton Canyons have, definitely have a spotlight on them right now, but I think if we're gonna get something done, it's gonna be right now. So I wouldn't waste this opportunity, and I, it's an exciting time right now to see it, and it's amazing the amount of people that are coming to visit. A lot of out of town people, a lot of people from Colorado, huge out of town people, every time I pulled someone over that was stuck, I were out of town, never seen this before, you know, so.
We have to buy chains for our rental car.
Yeah, and the rental cars, no chains and no snow tires coming on, so those are the other things we face, so those are things we're working on. But just know that we're, we haven't forgotten Cotton Heights, say, your top was our priority, I think that's one of the biggest things in my mind when I'm trying to get the canyon open, is how does WASHATCH look? How is WASHATCH looking? And that's one of my major concerns, and I wanted to let you know that, that, when I'm up here and we're doing avalanche control, I am constantly checking the cameras, I'm asking my cloud drivers, how does WASHATCH look, where are we backed up to, what can we do, can we bring people up? So just know that we're trying to do the best we can, and there's always room for improvement, but we'd love to hear your ideas and love to work with you and, and solve this problem.
Jake, I've been in the government for forty-five years, I've read about the term working on it, that always raises a question in my mind, because that's the bad answer. And I appreciate this presentation, what's happened, but we'd really like to set some benchmarks or some timetables, so we can define what working on is.
So that's what the transportation action plan is to do, is to set those timelines, and we're just starting that process, as well as the environmental impact statement for the whole cotton canyon, and we'll also identify actions. But the process is just getting started, in the next year or so, a lot will happen, and prioritization of those actions.
Is this one that Jesse was leaving?
Well, UDOT and such WASHATCH commission, and that's gonna continue, and we're, we're on it, it's our bread and butter, it's what we know what to do. And so everybody, you know, have had these same conversations from nineteen eighty-nine and the WASHATCH general plan, and subsequent studies, and a little patience. This one does have different legs than the previous items.
I, I guess from my perspective, I feel like collectively, we had a great win this year with the mass transit hub and the thirteen million dollars that was allocated from the legislature for that. There's been, I think, a lot of pressure from the county to see that money be utilized quickly, which we all know is probably not realistic with, with the gravel pit in its current state. But I just, and I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought, but, but I, I have to echo what the mayor is saying, because there's these little, little things that can be done, that, that maybe, if, there are little things that do take some money, like maybe it's getting more money to UPD to have somebody at the, you know, to do like some kind of sticker campaign, say, okay, if your car has snow tires, and they have really good tread, you get a green sticker and you just zip up there. I know there's, there's a cost that's associated with that, we don't wanna pay for it, Sandy doesn't wanna pay for Alta's snowbird, nobody wants to pay for it. But it seems like if we could start thinking about those solutions now, what the monetary amount is, then we could maybe go to the legislature again next year and say, here, here's some things that we could do immediately, while waiting for TAF and the EIS, but we need some money to do that. Because it just seems like everybody's always saying, well, you know, it's UPD, and nobody wants to pay for UPD, and, you know, us included, we don't wanna pay extra money to help WASHATCH Boulevard and help our community, because, you know, we're always at this difficult period with our budget. So like, what are those things with some money associated with it, let's go after it, like with the gravel pit.
I agree, I think, one of the things that I see, this year, not a lot of people know, the resorts paid for off-duty officers to man the mouth of the canyon for chain law. Huge success, and in fact, they metered ninety-fourth and WASHATCH also, a lot of people don't know, the resorts paid that. So imagine how much we could do if Cotton Heights put in a little money, Sandy City put in a little money, the resorts put in a little money, UDOT offers resources. Then that problem of the big dollar amount is not so big anymore, and I think that's where we need to come together as communities and agencies up here, is we need to stop saying, well, I can't pay it all, or, you know, I can't pay it all, I think we need to all take a piece of it. But when we offer, like, hey, who wants to help pay, no one wants to, but everybody wants officers down there, and everybody wants, you know, the chain law enforced, those are things I think we can do. And I think if we, it won't be a huge amount on you, but I think if you pitch in a little, and Sandy pitches in a little, Snowbird paid for a lot of officers this year, and, and then Alta paid, and then the town of Alta paid for metering, and with that, and with UDOT doing the things they're doing, I mean, we'd be hugely successful. So as a council, I can kind of keep that in mind, some of the things that we can do, we did that, and also what we've done is educate people on the chain law. A lot of people don't know what the chain law is, we have little stickers, we've gone out to rental agencies, we've tried to get the word out, we're gonna continue to do that, continue to educate people, and I think we're getting better, we're getting a lot better. So I think there's things that we can all do that will help out tremendously, but we all have to pitch in a little bit.
Jake, thank you, we've been along for hours, and this was really meant to be informative to our council, to have a better understanding of your challenges, and maybe get a little sense, I know you, you deal with enough complaints, but we wanna be a part of the solution, as much as we more than we wanna be a part of the problem. We'll continue to, to communicate with John and with UDOT, and try to, we'll start pushing some initiatives to mitigate these challenges. But I hope you're able to hire your canyon communication specialist right away, because I still think fundamentally, communication is always the key fundamental piece of anything we do, because there's so much more that we can work on, and I realize working on it's a phrase, but hopefully we can create some type of action schedule without working on it. Thank you so much, Brent Gussi, we're lucky to have you up there, and thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you, and if there's anything I could do, Matt knows where I live, and.
He knows your person.
He can take care of things, so, thank you.
All right, Brianna, thank you for coming too, and John. All right, if you look at your agenda, the next you'll do is review the business meeting. After the walking the fridge, we're presenting a proclamation that's made amongst the next one by the Reverend. She has another guest that would like to support you there. Chief, you'll be presenting to the officers, how many will be here?
There are four, sir.
Four, great. Then following, both acknowledgements, we'll have citizen comments, we have a couple of action items, one is two rezones. Mike wants to speak to both people quickly, I know we went through it last meeting.
I'm sorry, did you say four, I knew we saw the search.
Uh huh, four.
Can, can we get a little, at some point today, so you see the, a little short bylaw on, how many years we've been officers, or just a little bit of something?
Yeah, you gotta do that now, or I'm gonna do it in there, or?
I think it'd be great in there, I don't know what you're planning, I'd love to know, I know you usually do that, but maybe a little bit more tonight.
Glad to, we'll call them up individually and let them introduce themselves. Three laterals, one kid, no, three laterals, and one out of the academy, yeah. Salt Lake, West Jordan, Sandy, the other one out of the academy.
So do you have to look back to?
I don't know.
I'd like some more detail on that, I think I requested that, how can we, how can we know where we're at sapping wise? We've got four, we have four coming, how many, how many do we, like, I've got that little.
Yeah, I submitted the latest one, I think, a week ago, that has the latest. That's there, we can reset that, we need to.
Not potential, there'll be three more quit and leave, and actually four, but I hired one back today, so there are three, and we're interviewing this week.
When you say quit, they, they gone to permanent?
We're to.
But please, you know, with, with the council, I mean, Mike would be dressed, please take a moment and have your background, where they're from, and some information.
We're proud of them, we'd like to show them off, so, thank you.
But may what, the request is to the future, maybe we can have a little bit more information with them, it's always exciting to see new, new faces, new people.
We'll do a little short file before they get here. Okay.
Thank you. Mike, thank you.
Yeah, very quickly, you'll remember that our last meeting, we did public comment on three rezones, the, the two on for action that are both on Fort Union. The applicant of the third rezone was unable to attend the night, so we've continued that for the next council meeting.
Yeah, that one is the one off.
That's the one on Little Cotton with Canyon Road, that also includes the general plan and the, so that is not up for decision tonight. I will be very brief here, these are two parcels on Fort Union, three parcels total, the two applications, right down the street from each other. The first one is about a half acre property, right adjacent to the fire station on Fort Union Boulevard, point five four acres. Existing zoning is R one eight, but the, the general plan in that area is mixed use, so this is an application for a rezone that complies with the land use designation of the general plan. The minutes just arrived yesterday, they were sent out.
Yeah, I've got my resume.
There were a, a few comments on, on both of these, but bear in mind.
Well, one of them had support, and then we had some concerns and they were.
Yeah, the, the concerns of traffic and land use, that's always been up, and that's always addressed at the site plan level. Both of these received the same recommendation at the same meeting, so we can have this recommendation of approval from the planning commission. The second one is closer to seventeen hundred east, directly south of Mount Vee Park. You'll see in the yellow there, the point six eight acres were previously rezoned to mixed use, last year, the year prior, and these are the, the next two parcels to the west of that. None of them have been redeveloped at this point. Again, the general plan shows a way we can mix use, this is a zone map amendment application that we can form with the general plan. Received the same recommendation of approval from the planning commission.
Both recommended unanimously by the planning.
Correct, yeah.
Any questions of, of Mike on each two action items? Okay, the, the third item is the resolution for the entry into independent contract agreement for snow engineering. We're gonna hold that open agenda, we want to gather a little bit more information. So that's, that's our business meeting, turning back to the works section. So after the works, if you want to attend, we talked about information distribution, as we said, we talked to council members, and we took a look at some ways to improve that.
Okay, what, what prompted this, is as you said, there are some council members that wanted us to look at a program that we can send you information, and then allow for more opportunity for comment, or for storage of the information sent to you in a, a more organized way. So we looked at this with our IT staff, I'm actually gonna turn some time over to Matt, and we do have some programs that we already, that are already part of our package with our software that we think could work, so what we wanna do is present this to you, and then just get your input, if this is something that can work, we'll, we'll start moving towards the council communications that I send to you on a weekly basis, being sent through this type of program. That being said, we don't have to have a decision tonight, we're, we're providing information, if this doesn't work, we can look at other options as well, but I'm gonna turn some time over to Matt, like, and show what capabilities this program has.
And Mike, do you wanna actually bring yours up first? So Mike has actually been using the one we already own, Microsoft Teams, it's a conjunction of Microsoft Teams and Microsoft Planner. So essentially, they've got different sections that you can plan, add different tasks, assign those tasks to people, upload documents to those tasks as needed. So if it's within the team itself, everyone that has access to the team has access to the document, they can see the status or the, you know, depending on how you wanna mark it, you can put it at fifty percent complete, a hundred percent complete, do you wanna show me, you guys just moved them?
Yeah, so, we've been using this probably three weeks or so, as a way to just keep track of projects, but it's really, can be custom tailored to whatever you want to do. And the, the color is bad, there's actually, you can see boxes on my computer, so it's not all white, there are separate boxes there that aren't showing up on the screen. But you can come in and you create these, you know, headline, or, or headers or categories, and these could be categorized by date, or department, or, you know, whatever else. We've just categorized different types of projects that we're working on and.
Are those boards?
It's, I think there's all buckets, but yeah, essentially.
Oh, I didn't see the term board there or something.
Yeah, so, so this, this whole thing is the board, and then you, you can come in and assign projects to each bucket in the board, and we're grouped by bucket. So we've got long race planning for one, and this is, we're just tracking some of the long race.
Is this your bucket list?
Yeah, yeah, still excited. You can come in here and assign staff, and each of these has a, a window that can be opened up, files can be uploaded in here, you can mark due date, status, and then anyone that's invited to this project's board can come in here and see there's an update and they get it. And then you can, kind of another cool thing is when it's assigned to a specific person, you can sort over here by who it's assigned to. So this is just within our department, there's projects that are just broken down by staff member and who's assigned to what, so you can pretty clearly see.
We'll take an example, take by Bonner Shoreline, so if that's in the.
Yeah. So, so with the Bonner Shoreline Trail, the, the, this portion of it applies to the RFP that we're putting out for some trailhead analysis. And, and you can come in and add kind of milestones here, so we've drafted the RFP, it will be posted later this week, in which case we'll, we'll check that off. If you have multiple people assigned, you can come in here and add comments, and, and it will post to the board, and you can track it that way. So any feedback could be provided this way, if we have files attached, you could go in and see these and make edits and changes.
So if we were a team member on in the bucket, we'd go to it, but I suspect some of those things you don't want us to edit, so do we have like, a non-editable function just going?
So, so in the context of what we're talking about here, we would set a system up like this for the council members, and the information I'm sending you on a weekly basis, you could set, you could have the board and the bucket items, so for example, if you get a police, police monthly report, that can be placed in, into a police bucket, is that the right?
It's almost like a file cabinet.
A file cabinet, or if it's a public works report, or if it's something related to public works, you, you could put it in there, and then it would be organized. So you could go back and, and maybe it's a, the council communication letters, you could go back, because they're all in one location, you could go back for four months and say, oh yeah, I wanted to look something up here, this is where it's at, rather than having to search your email, you know, for months or weeks on end. So that, that's the, that's the context of how it would work in this, from this perspective. You, you wouldn't be into the community development projects, but it would be set up for me to give you information, for you to file it the way you want with a program like this, does that make sense?
When you say the way that you want, that's a you, me, Alta, you, all of us?
All of us, yeah.
It's also a good, a good way to hand off assignments as well, so if there's something that I want done, I can create a little, I don't know if they're called cards or.
Tasks, there's all.
Tasks, whatever it is, and, and assign it, and follow up that it gets completed.
And I built a couple of examples that are not real, but I just built this. And I built a couple of examples that are not real, but I just built this to kind of show, so we, like, we built basically, since I worked with Scott, right, a full administrative services, finance and IT. There's a general tab, one that he can assign out to just finance and one that maybe just relates to IT. Put it separately, and we built one that is just IT. And we've still got general, and then Jill helped me with this, and we've played around, but just things would be more desktop. So you can, in example, upload a document. And if you guys all wanted to work on this document, the first kind of cool thing is you can open it right here, and you can do this on your phone from the web browser, from the application itself. So there's this. This is the same as this web browser back behind. And you can actually just come in and edit it. And you can edit it in Microsoft, or just right on the team's website, or you can edit it in Word. And if two people were in there, you're actually going to see where they're at. You can edit it together. You can see old versions, old histories, who edited what.
So if you're doing it in Word, that's connected up live to master copying?
Well, once you put it here, this is the master copy. So if Tim had one that he uploaded to this, his copy's still his, but this one is then the shared one that everyone can add it, edit, add comments, change. And then it would be up to Tim if he wanted to download that to retain it off both teams or whoever.
Does it automatically retain the original so that one person doesn't get it?
So what you've got is you can come in here and say, I want to see this version history. And if this was a better example, there would be who uploaded it, and then who changed it when, the next change, the next change. You can just click these and say, view this version. I probably should have picked. Come back right to Teams. Set it desktop, we'll do this one. This contacts document that we've carried around with it. That'll open it up. You can just come in and see the copy or the history. You can open this version, this version, this version. So there's a full history of what it is. So if somebody made a change you didn't want, you can just come in and open the change, see what's in there. In this case, you can see changes made by Jill. And you view the paragraph. And she'll get a notice. She can come in here and check this. It's going to post it in addition to the conversation of this general team. So we'll see to Jill, there's the link to the document, you can review this. So it's got a history, a conversation. You can upload files this way, use it as a conversation, or like Mike was doing, and this is just an add-on, you can build out as many of these as you want. You can have multiple teams within teams, and you can have multiple... So in this case, we have an IT team, and we can have desktop stuff, and we could have server stuff, and we could have storage stuff, or whatever it's going to be. And you could build another one here that might be IT as it relates to the police department, or IT as it relates to finance, or... And just build it out. And once it's here, everyone that joins or has access to the team, and each of these individually can be scoped out. So this one Jill and I have access to. You can see here, it's just, or sorry, Scott and I are owners, and Jill has access, whereas this one...
Now, is this the same program that Mike just referred to?
It is. This is all in that same program. So in this case, you know, and this one, Jill, Candy and Dave have access. Scott and I are owners of this one. So you can build files, share files, edit files, manage files, add comments, questions. There's kind of an infinite number of ways to use this.
Have a real question.
Yes.
Well, I asked a question. I think I know the answer. I don't know if it's actually true. Because the biggest issue I have on finding and locating anything is the search ability and specifically scan documents.
So documents themselves? So if you, if somebody puts a document here...
And they scan for whatever reason.
Well, let's say we put a document here, we dump it in. This is going to be all the files if there were any that were in this particular field. Whereas this desktop one, this is all the files as related to this desktop. So you can put it where you want it.
But I don't know where it is, but I remember that Tim sent it a couple of weeks ago, so I remember it talked about, I don't know, gremlins. I want to go searching for gremlins, and I want to find it, but if it's in a scanned PDF, a lot of law and won't do the OCR and come out and let me search for gremlins if it is safe.
But unless it had to be, I mean, right now, Tim's taking an electronic document and turning it into a PDF. You would put this, the native document here, so you could always search.
Oh, no, that's what you should.
Yeah. Some documents you don't get that way, so you have a little different problem.
So in this case, I search track, and I make sure I'm searching, you can search messages, people or files, so it's going to find that document. However, what I don't think it's going to do is if we wanted to look at, let's say unzip, we're trying to see anything that had the word unzip in it. I don't think that's going to find it. Oh, and it did actually. Trackstar had the word unzip in it.
I mean, you understand what I'm saying. Because I was looking into tonight's council meeting, I was like, you know, I don't think I've actually seen that resolution. I'd like to read it, but I can't find it.
And if you search it right here, and then just search by files, it'll find any file that has that in it.
But it'd be different if it were an image.
If it's an image, you're only going to search the name, basically.
Now, it's interesting, because OneNote, OneNote will do that.
If it's an OCR file, and that's the kind of the key, is when you scan a PDF, you have to scan it in a version that has the OCR. That's part of the PDF document.
OneNote will do it though.
Does it?
Yep. It does the OCR.
I don't know the answer to whether this one does or does not OCR it, but I can find out.
Yeah, I mean, that becomes the biggest issue, because I opened up the email that I thought it was in, and I did my client, says I can't find a result. So then I looked at it, and I said, well, there's a word that I know's in it, because it's right there, and I searched for that word, and I figured zero. That's what's frustrating for me, is just not being able to search.
So with this, we can show you other, potentially other options. We just want some direction. We want to show you what we have available, if there's other things that you want us to look at. We're not in a big hurry on this, although you may be in a hurry to get it so you can store and you can search things better on what I send you or others send you. But is this something that's of interest to you? Do you want us to continue to pursue shaping this program or other programs so you can receive information this way? And that's my big question.
What about the notifications? When Mike goes in and changes something, do I get a notification, or do I just have to log in and I'll see everything that's new?
For the most part, you have to log in and see everything that's new. I believe there's some minor notifications we can add to it, and I can play with that a little more.
But is there a place that says, this is everything that's changed since last time you were here?
So when I added this, this just has a thing that says new. You can, I mean, essentially, most stuff's going to be in this conversation.
There is on that conversations page. If anyone makes changes, it shows.
Yeah, so it's going to... It's going to notice or tell you in this conversation what changed and when for most things. If you upload a file directly to here, it may not, but if somebody were to comment on that like we did and say, I've uploaded this, it'll add that to the conversation, notifying you that it was uploaded, and you'd be able to link to what was uploaded.
So Mike, could you use a line up to be able to do it?
We've tried some of these before, and I think what the value in this is, is it's kind of as customizable as you want it to be. So if you wanted a, say, a, I don't know what to call it, a board that's specific to resolutions or ordinances, you could set up that page however you want, assign council members to it, and you could go in and view all of those ordinances and resolutions. Rather than having to search through an email, you can put the documents into a board like this. You can access it on your phone, on your computer, wherever you are.
I mean, we could have something A to use. Obviously know what the latest thing was and any conversations that was regarding that.
So, yeah, and I think there are two benefits that we've seen, is one, it just keeps things organized. It's a place you can view all these files that are being sent by email. You don't have to store them on your computer. They're stored through, I believe, through OneDrive. And two is it can be a good tool for collaboration. When it's necessary to go in and collaborate on a document, once you kind of get past the learning curve, it's easy to go in and, you know, comment on the same document as a group of people and be able to just work in that one native document.
I use something very similar. I mean, it's almost, it's the same idea. It's from a different provider, but I use it every day, all day. It helps me so much, I can't even tell you. So I'm a big fan. I think this solution appears to have some advantages over what I use for us.
It's paid for?
Well, the one I use is free, so that's a little more anyway, but I think it would be great.
I like, I've just expressed my concern, and if there's a way we can get it, whether that's a rule that you can't just stick an image up there, you need this tab, an OS yard or whatever. Because that's the biggest one. I remember where that was exactly, you know. It needs to be organized so you can find it or be able to search for it.
We can play with the search.
My thing is kind of just search, you know.
So the bottom line, though, is even if you didn't have that, you'd be better off than where you are today by a long measure.
That's true. On my own, we did the sustainability resolution. It was like, well, where was that last? Yeah, it just took a while.
So it's okay, and I'd like other input from Christine Italian, your thoughts related to this.
I trust Mike, since this is really important. I don't use this every day. I'm not as far. There's some nights of three nights on.
But conceptually, it's the direction that we're...
Yeah, it makes sense.
So what we'll do is we'll continue to shape this, and then probably meet individually with you to talk. Once we get it shaped a little bit more fully, we'll meet individually with you and work towards some trainings or...
And Mike used a keyword a minute ago, which, and I'd love to soften the administrative services, but the fact that we can customize it. So if this has the ability to customize what we need, then that's outside of the...
The setup of it is really important. If you set it up right, you can set it up in a way that's not very effective too, so.
A good example would be, this would be not how to set it up. This was just for a quick demonstration and not what I would do in real life, whereas Mike's is very clean, easy to follow. You can see what's there. So taking your time and setting it up is going to be...
And by asking that customization of setup, if you try and make it as simple as possible.
Yep.
So because if they're too complex, normalization.
I agree.
As simple as possible.
Well, Mike Johnson, does it allow you to put an alias in a different bucket, back to the original document? For example, we're working on A to use, that's a thing, but if I only comes up on the council agenda, does that just, can we just link there or link a shortcut?
I'll pop on quick now.
Yeah.
So I think you can have this tab that says files, and you can have all, just documents living in here. They're not really well organized, but what you can do is link these files to a specific dashboard. So if I have a file in here, let's say, I can get tested one, the superhero bike ride is just a logo.
You'll link it to more than one?
Yeah. So I took it to the dashboard over to this bike ride item, and that document is linked in right here. So yeah, you can put these wherever you need.
Well, you want one master document with...
Well, it's all linked back to the one document.
You don't want to have the two documents.
It's all one master document.
And really, you can run your meeting out of here, and so your agenda is actually right here. I mean, you obviously have to post an agenda, but you can run the meeting right here, and then everybody has all of the ideas live and right in front of them.
We'll keep working on it, get back. That's all right.
This doesn't duplicate their work, I guess, only in the fact that they upload it here rather than sending it to you or to this. Is there a duplicate of it?
Yeah, it's two separate.
But some of the things he puts in his council things, he would then be linking the document rather than attaching it to this thing.
Yeah, linking it to the document for your use, for the council.
So like the resolution, he would actually, and I don't see where, he would have an attached, an attached scanned version of it, and it'd just be a link. You want to see this document like this and open it.
I know, I guess, always my concern with this, like, shared file or whatever it is that you use in your organizations, is I have on my computer, I have all of my documents. But then I have another area where different people can see all of my documents, and it just, sometimes you get errors as to which is the master document. Is it the one on the OneDrive here, or is it the one on Mike? I don't, I guess I just always worry about, you know, making it harder, adding more work. That's all. It sounds like...
And that was my point a minute ago, if it's as simple as clean as possible.
And for me, I keep my documents there.
You don't have it anywhere else.
Yeah, that's the master place.
But for Mike, it wouldn't be in his master place.
It probably is for many of the documents that he's using in this conversation. There are certainly some things that that's not true.
Yeah, and a lot of stuff we upload it is just for a test, but yeah, if we're, if we're full swing, this is the hub that everyone goes to get the...
Everybody on your team.
Yeah, right, in whatever capacity we're using it. If we're using it in our department to track projects, we're going to upload the official relevant files for that project that we...
But I think with Matt and Tim, I think you have enough feedback here that I can get a consensus on the direction, and you can work on it and you find it.
We'll keep working on it.
I think there's a good direction. I think it adds some efficiency and it's a good communication tool as well.
So would we still be getting emails after this exists, or once you've set this up and we like it, and we go there for the weekly communications or the...
Yeah, I'll probably, I'll send you an email saying...
I would have this stuff, so I'd have to attach this stuff on.
The communications out of the care.
Yeah, communications out.
So this issue is, I don't want to add my phone.
All right, so the other thing that's really nice is it has your phone as well.
Yeah, good.
And so when he sent the comment, he got an email that said, hey, there's three comments. He got notified. But wherever you are, whether you're on this computer or some other one, the documents are there because they're all centralized and clustered.
The notification on the phone is critical.
And you can pull it right up on your phone.
And if you can read little tiny things on your phone.
All right. When do you get going? That clock is ten minutes slow up there, so...
Hey, I was actually early.
Senator, welcome. Good to see you.
Hi, how are you?
I think we need to adjourn from our work session and move into our community development and relativity meeting. I need a motion to do that. Well, I can't have a motion here, so it is good.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, a motion to adjourn, yeah, we can do that. Yeah. Motion to adjourn.
Comfortable sharing, right?
Motion to adjourn.
I would like to adjourn our work session and move into our CDR anyway.
In a second? Can't it?
Where's the file? I can forward it to, I think, Tim has it for...
Okay. Do you have his presentation?
I do, yes.